I'm here.
Councilmember Ho?
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
May you have a call?
And next we have salute to the flower because member whole indication will be city attorney, please stand.
Please stand. Hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Father, we thank you for the opportunity once again, conduct the city's business. We ask that you'd be here with us and help us to make wise decisions for the benefit of all the people. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, councilmember Ho and city attorney. We don't have any close section today to report. We don't have expertise communication. How was city clerk report? Do we have anything?
Thank you, mayor. Today is the close of nominations and the clerk's office is open for nomination purposes only until 5:00 PM today.
Thank you so much. That's all you have today? We appreciate that. Next, we have city manager report, anything to report?
Nothing to report today.
Thank you so much. So basically this meeting is continued from the last Wednesday meeting. So our city attorney already explained to me that there will be no oral communication because we have only, only one item on agenda and this item actually was continued from the last meeting. So that's what he said. City attorney, can you explain, please?
This is a continued meeting. It's the same meeting and that was the motion that was made. So, so when you continue a meeting, it's the same meeting you're just continuing in.
Is it not at a council's discretion, city, city, city attorney? Is council discretion, right?
Council certainly has discretion.
Okay, so with that.
How many public speakers do we have?
Yes, but the city, it's maybe kidding. It's not about me. I want people to speak, but the city, yeah, okay.
Hey, can we have order? Let's, I'm for having letting the public.
Okay, so all of us, we want, we want to hear from the public. Am I correct?
How many speakers are we talking about?
Just, just so you know, I, I have to leave. I'm scheduled to go to work, so I can, I have to leave by 1:00, so.
Okay.
How many?
All right, so open all the communication. So I just want to explain because our city, our city attorney already explained to me, but hey.
Yes, yes, mayor, thank you. This, this is an important meeting and also too, we need to be mindful that we need a councilmember Doe for today's really important me, topic and we need to make sure we have, we have enough time for, for that, for councilmember Doe.
All right.
Thank you, mayor. The first speaker is Nico Lee, followed by Gina Nunes.
Morning, councilmen and women. My name's Nico Lee. I am a homeowner and resident in Santa Ana as well as longtime person who lived in Westminster most of his life. I volunteer for VietRise and I'm here to show my strong support for the tax. And I really want you guys to vote yes on it so we can continue having the necessary needs for our city. And that's all I would like to say. Thank you very much.
Gina Nunes, followed by Nguyen Hong.
Members of the city council, my name is Gina Nunes and I am your family resource center supervisor. The Westminster Family Resource Center has been operational for over 20 years and is one of the longest tenured FRCs in the county. The Family Resource Center serves the community and its residents in a unique and collaborative way. We work tirelessly, tirelessly to keep kids and families safe and strong by offering services and resources that build on family strength, ultimately prevent child abuse and neglect. We serve the at-risk and underserved community and ensure that they know that they have somewhere to turn when times are tough. Whether that is to get food and diapers when they have run out and don't have the money to buy more, to get empowerment services in the face of domestic violence, or get counseling when life's challenges become too much. We offer programs to kids to avoid trouble and build their own path to success, as well as family activities to encourage bonding and healthy relationships. We serve this diverse community in a way that only the FRC can. And please also let me remind you that we are the only family resource center in Orange County offering services in Vietnamese. If this council does not vote to put Measure SS on the ballot for the public's vote, the Family Resource Center will be another one of the valuable city programs and services that will no longer exist to benefit this community. While the FRC is grant funded, without the city's financial contribution and staff support from other departments, we will struggle to meet our contractual obligations and will not be able to go after future grants for continued funding. The FRC will have to close its doors in the near future, taking the resources and the designated, I'm sorry, the dedicated staff with it. This community and its residents will lose this very necessary useful and valuable resource. Thank you.
Good morning. Honorable Mayor Chi Thar, honorable city council member, honorable city manager and city lawyer. Today, I want to continue on Wednesday, I broken my wifi. So my subject is first of all, I opposing caution candidate Nam Quan Nguyen and I in favor of let the tax measure into November 8, 2022. Ladies and gentlemen, my undersigned Nguyen Hong, Westminster Californian ID 2683. I am writing this letter to with two proposal. Number one, pledge tax measure into November election ballot. Number two, complain of unethical conduct and bad background regarding caution candidate Nam Quan Nguyen. Number one, I stuck a pair, excuse me, as tech a pair. I living in the United States for more than forty-seven year. I am very familiar with the tax system of the city in particular and in the US general. I respectfully request that you let us vote, decide on our own tax high for the November 8, 2022 election. I have no objection and gladly accept the result of the vote, but I am delighted. When yourself to join our request. In addition, I also ask for don't deter by the police. Actually, we need more police force instead. Number two, on August 8, 2022, I talk about meet the Nam Quan Nguyen behavior on civic ethic and law violation. So I ask the city to consider the candidate processes. In particular, meet the Nam Quan Nguyen is very unworthy to represent the resident of area four in particular and also in the city Westminster in general. I am impure individual, is not worthy of representative the resident.
I'm sorry, you can't make references to other people and it's to be related to.
Mr. Nguyen, I like to explain to you. Can you stop the time? Okay, so Mr. Nguyen, this is the special meeting for only one item on agenda. So you're more than welcome to say anything about the item on agenda, but you know, we refer you don't speak anything about anyone else, please. We will appreciate that. I hope that you.
Okay, that's fine. I send you a letter. You can read my letter. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Deborah Maristal, followed by Measure SS, Diana Carey.
Morning, everybody. Morning, everybody. Thank you for your attention. Appreciate it. I'm speaking from the heart today. Didn't prepare anything. I'm just going to say what I need to say. My father, my brothers, my uncles did not fight wars in this country so that you could take away our right to vote. What happened to you? Why have you become so callous to the residents of Westminster? Officer Doe, you turned your back on your fellow officers here by abstaining. Charlie, I see that you're trying to run for multiple offices. Is your desire to be a politician for power, for money? Or should you just be running your own business and be a resident of the, of the city? Mayor, you've been here 16 years. I agree that when the initial process for the, for the measure had a sunset clause on it, shouldn't have been six years though, should have been 10 or 20. And I understand why you did it. Travis Allen is one of my very favorite friends, client. Understand, you don't want to be perceived as raising taxes. Carlos, you have the utmost respect for me for standing up for the people. I really appreciate and applaud you. Really appreciate that. Ms. Doe, you mentioned a few months ago that you came, come up with great ideas under pressure. Where, where are they? Maybe I missed something. I haven't seen any. Where are we going to come up with $17 million a year? And where are we going to come up with half of that if this doesn't go to the vote and be passed so that we can start collecting that money? Because somebody else in the state will collect it, as Jill Dominguez said on Wednesday. So Moses went to Pharaoh. I'm going to give a biblical example since we have in God we trust and since we do a prayer, the invitation of each one of our meetings. Moses went to Pharaoh, who was his stepbrother on behalf of God and said, let my people go that they might worship me. I'm going to say to you, let my people vote.
Good morning, council. I'm Diana Carey. I'm the chair of the Measure SS Oversight Committee. First of all, I want to thank you for having this meeting today and I want to thank Vice Mayor Monzo and Councilmember Kimberly Ho for their yes votes on that, trying to get this on the ballot. The last thing that the Measure SS committee said was, please, you know, we need to be able as a community to vote on this. And you know, four of you came from an oppressed country where they do not allow the vote. And that is called communism and we need to have you vote, allow us to be able to decide on this. And on a personal note, you know, I was on the council for four years. I served with you, Mayor Ta. You are capable of really outstanding leadership of making good decisions. But putting the sunset clause on the Measure SS was a mistake and the city manager said that, our council people, myself, Margie Rice, Sergio, our consultants, we all warned you about that, that we would be in the same shape and here we are again. And this is your chance to show that leadership that you want to show in Sacramento by voting to put this on the ballot. It's, it's a chance for you to fix that mistake and I know that you are capable of that. And so I'm really asking you to please do the right thing. And I know in your heart, you know what the right thing is and that is to let us vote. You know, and Charlie, I know you want to run for mayor and I know that you know what doing the right thing is because two years ago when this came up, you did vote to put it on the ballot so that we could, we could vote for it as a people. And so we're asking you to please, you know, as a potential mayoral candidate, please let us vote and please show that leadership that you showed before. Let's be consistent on that. You know, and lastly, and this really, I hate to say this, but Ty Doe, you have been the worst thing that has happened to this council. You are a disappointment. By voting to abstain and not allowing this to go on the, the ballot, you are putting all of the most vulnerable people, and we have a lot of them in this city. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. You are putting the most vulnerable people in this community at risk and that's our students, our older people, our Vietnamese community and all of us. And what is absolutely unconscionable is that you are putting your fellow officers, the men and women in uniform, in jeopardy because we are not funded like we should be. And you yourself are a police officer. How dare you do that to our police? That is just absolutely unconscionable. So that, as far as I am concerned, you know, you have been irrelevant to this, this council because you won't get on board with anything. And I am just disappointed and I just think your actions have been despicable. And like I said, I'm, I apologize to the rest of you for being that outraged, but I am outraged because I want to vote on this. We live in a democracy and we should be able to vote. So please, we need a super majority on this. You know, let's step up and let's have that super majority. Let's save our community. And let's not put it off till December because that'll cost the city literally $12 million. Because if it passed, we've got three quarters that we won't be able to collect that tax on. Plus, what? $200,000 to $500,000 for a special election. So come on, let's do the right thing. I know you're capable of it. You've shown it before. Thank you.
I just, before we, before we get to the next speaker, I just need to make an announcement. If anyone is live streaming on Granicus right now, that system is actually down. But anyone watching the meeting can still watch live on the cable channel and of course on YouTube Live, so, and on Zoom. So we just need to make that announcement.
The next speaker is San Doe, followed by Allison Bo and then Eric Doe.
Good morning, Mayor Chi Thar and the city council members. I would like to speak in Vietnamese because I know at this time, many other Vietnamese people who stay home, who cannot join meeting and want to listen from myself.
Hold on, sir. So I need someone to translate into Vietnamese, oh, into English.
Are you, are you speaking in Vietnamese and then translating yourself?
No, I'm asking for the.
We, so we, we did not get requests for a speaker at, for a translator or interpreter, rather, at this last minute. So we don't have an interpreter, a city assigned interpreter.
Okay.
So if you wanted to translate yourself, you can under the five minutes, but not with your expanded, but not with 10 minutes because the point is to address the council.
Because we don't have anyone to translate your Vietnamese into English.
But I know my speaker will be recorded, right?
Yeah, of course.
And I would like to speak in Vietnamese.
But I, may I, so may I remind you that if you speak strictly in Vietnamese, the vice mayor wouldn't understand anything. The vice mayor would not understand. Your, yeah. So no, it's still up to you, but if you want, you know, all five members understand, you need to speak in English, but you still have your right to speak in any language that you wish. But I would like to remind you, if you want the vice mayor to understand, he would not understand.
Okay, and just to be clear, it'd be five minutes then, because we don't have a translator. So five minutes.
Okay, yes. My name is San Doe. I'm a resident in the mobile home park named Beach Boulevard cottages. I'm also the president of the Orange County Mobile Home Resident Coalition. Last night, I was surprised when I heard the new, bad news from my colleges about the city council was not pass the new sales tax measure on the ballot and on that, no, next November. And I also know you have prepared for this matter for a long time. You have the people go to ask resident, have an idea, any idea with the decision. But, and also you have about 76% of resident support for your issue. With the the, with your, your decision last Wednesday is facing the city to the worst case of the bankruptcy. And it's also mean we will last, a last job. And also the resident of the Westminster city will last their benefit from the city. In the past many years, I worked for, I do believe, I worked for all of you in many election times and just like many other Vietnamese people, I'm all very proud to be a resident in the city of Westminster where we proud to be the where the Westminster proud to be the capital of the Vietnamese refugee outside of Vietnam. And we also have four council members are Vietnamese people. Also with all of, with your council members, I want to know what do you think when you did not vote for the new sale tax measure on the next election. Mayor Chi Thar, when you go for the election this November, as a assemblyman, have you ever think you will have your statement about your decision, you make the city of Westminster go to the bankruptcy? Also with councilman Charlie and councilman member Ty Doe, when you run for the city mayor, do you think you can say with your resident that you are the member of the city council who make this city bankrupt? And what would you do to keep our city make it getting better? I hope you will think again, consider, reconsider and would yes for the new sale tax measure on this November election. Thank you very much.
Hey, good afternoon, city council members. My name is Allison. I am a staff member at VietRise. We're a community organization that organizes with Vietnamese and immigrant communities year round. We engage in civic engagement work as well as organizing. So it is very clear in terms of the conversations that we've had with residents, especially in the city of Westminster and what they want for this city. And so today I am here to urge you to vote yes on both motions to put the tax measure on the November election ballot. The city staff has already presented projections of bankruptcy by the end of 2024. And this is an issue that the city council has known about for the past three years. Yet there were not concerted and more urgent actions taken, taken sooner. And so on Wednesday, you know, Mayor Chi Thar, councilmember Ty Doe and Charlie Wing failed to put the new sales tax measure on the November ballot by abstaining from the vote. And so these three abstentions denied Westminster, Westminster residents of their democratic right to vote for their future, save the city from bankruptcy, as well as protecting critical city services and programs that would have a direct impact on the lives of residents of the city. There's a reason why that the survey that the consultant you all hired to conduct came out to be 76% in support of a tax measure. Today, I urge you to vote in the interest of your residents and represent the 76% of residents as well as the people who may not already, the people who may not have already been notified of this issue. City government should be accessible. I'm going to break away really quick because I think, you know, senior residents who show up, especially who are monolingual, or immigrants who are refugees, should have immediate access to a translator. If that doesn't reiterate the point that the city needs a tax measure to ensure that these type of city services allow for your residents to speak about the issues that concern them, I, I don't know what else, right? So the tax measure would essentially ensure that critical city services such as parks, senior care, meal and nutrition programs, youth programs and crucial city jobs that support the well-being of your residents are funded and remain available to your residents. We know that the residents here deserve better. And so today I strongly urge you to vote with the mandate of your residents and with your people. This is a way for you to actually demonstrate that you value and you care about the communities here. Westminster is a vibrant part of the little Saigon cities. And Westminster represents not only Vietnamese refugees, but a vibrant Latinx community as well as other ethnic and racial communities. And so today I strongly urge you to vote yes. And this is your last opportunity to put this on the November ballot for your residents and your constituents to voice their opinions to their local government and for y'all to be remain, to remain accountable and transparent to the people that you represent. Thank you.
The next speaker is Eric Doe, followed by Lisa Nguyen and John Gentil.
Good morning, city council members and Mayor Chi Thar. My name is Eric Doe. I live in Beach Boulevard cottages, mobile home park. And today I'm here to urge the city council members to vote yes to put the new measure, the tax measure on the November ballot. And I would like to remind you all that you are perfect public servants. And please put that vote yes to put the measure on the ballot so we can vote to save the city. Thank you very much.
Lisa Nguyen, followed by John Gentil.
Dear Mayor Chi Thar and Westminster City Council members, my name is Lisa Nguyen and I am a resident Westminster District 1. I've lived here for all my life, 24 years, and I'm also a volunteer with VietRise. Today I come to you to urge to vote yes on both motions to put the tax measure on the November election ballot. This tax measure would ensure that critical city services like keeping parks open, senior care, meal and nutrition programs, youth programs and crucial city jobs that support and care for residents remain and continue to be available. This tax measure would ensure that critical city services like keeping parks open, senior care, meal and nutrition programs, youth programs and crucial city jobs that support and care for residents remain and continue to be available. Please keep yourself accountable for the people and be intentional in your choices. We, the people and the communities, we show up for one another. So how are you showing up for us? Right? We have these different stories and lived experiences. Our community members, we can, we go to door to door and we listen to peoples and their stories. And living here within one of the largest Vietnamese diaspora, there's so many nuances and unique lived experiences and we should consider all of that when making policy and when passing ballot measures. So how are you going to show up for the residents? Because we are showing up, we are doing the work. So now it's your turn to be intentional, to be transparent and to be direct. Again, I urge you to vote yes to support the tax measure for the city of Westminster. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is John Gentil. I lived in the city for fifty years. I was with the Orange County Sheriff's Department for twenty-five years. I became an expert in many fields, including gangs and vice and narcotics. I've seen most, I've seen some of the most brutal attacks on people. I've seen dead bodies. I pulled people out of. At a mangled cars. I've seen it all. So. When I looked at Mr. Doe, I knew he had our back. There was nobody up here that I trusted more than Mr. Doe. He did the job. He knows what I'm talking about. He knows what's going to happen. If our city was to go bankrupt, even if we were to lose just the twelve million dollars. This city is going to turn to crap. You know what I'm talking about. You did the job. I'm asking all three of you, especially you, take our back. You know what's going to happen to this city. It's going to turn to shit. Now I drive down the streets now and I see people using razor wire. Three feet off the ground, all the way around their buildings. And why do they do that? Because they don't have trust in the city government. Now normally I would say, hey, somebody's going to fall into that and get hurt. But guess what? You know, desperate times, desperate means, you got to do what you have to do. So once again, come on, guys, this is, this is a no-brainer. You're not voting. For to to raise taxes, you're only saying yes to put it on the measure or put it on the ballot. So don't let this city take a shit. I'm counting on you and everybody up here. It's you. We're brothers. Do something. Here's your opportunity to stand up and do something. All right? Me and you. Thank you.
The next speaker is Shari Keanon, followed by Tim Hogan and Vas Han. Shari? Shari, I'm sorry.
I'm not a public speaker. I didn't plan on being here today until I heard the news yesterday. I went to bed Wednesday night believing the council would do the right thing. Believing the multitude of citizens, employees, police officers. Who spoke on behalf of Measure SS would surely convince the council to vote so their constituents. As their constituents wanted, requested and pleaded and do the right thing. I was shocked, yes, shocked to find out yesterday that three members of the council, in fact, had not done the right thing. That they had gone against their constituents and the citizens of Westminster. Direct requests and not only not followed our wishes, but cowardice with cowardice abstained from voting. So now here we are again at the eleventh hour. Pleading and dare I say begging you to do the right thing. Unless any of you has come with a better solution to the city's financial problems. Some grand plan that you're holding secret behind closed doors. I cannot understand the logic to not allowing the citizens to save their own city. To allow us to do the right thing and vote. I'd like to specifically address you, Officer Ho, a Long Beach police officer, serving next to my stepson, a Long Beach police officer. And I'm sorry, I'm shaking, I'm very upset. You have seen what defunding the police can do. What it has done to your department, services cut, task forces downsized or eliminated completely. Officers taking early retirements, recruiting at an all-time low. Good luck finding police officers right now and low morale. So I ask you, how can you face your fellow officers as they pleaded with you? And the council to do the right thing? Only to have you abstain from voting. How can you face your fellow officers knowing that if something is not done, the inevitable will happen? Good officers will leave to other cities, services will be cut, we will have little chance of hiring new recruits. And crime, which is a police chief reported, is up sixty-two percent in the city. It will go unchecked and flourish. The department is already clearly understaffed and stretched way too thin. How can we afford to cut more? How can you face your fellow officers and put their lives at risk, knowing when you do not have enough officers to be proactive and not just reactive? It puts them in dangerous situations, knowing when officers don't have the backup they need, we are putting our officers' safety and the public's safety at risk. How can you face the officers who defend and protect you and your family in the city you live in? I voted for you because my son stood up for you, said you were not a politician, you had integrity, that you would do the right thing. So I'm begging you, do the right thing now. Allow the citizens to vote on whether we want to pay the one percent tax and save our own city. Vote yes, do the right thing. I'd like to thank Vice Mayor Manzo for doing the right thing and for voting yes, for always trying to be the voice of reason on a council that has been notorious for nothing but antics, arguing, a lack of focus and a lack of decision-making. Wasting hours and hours of precious meeting time with personal attacks, their own agendas. And a lack of general leadership and decorum in this office. I'd like to thank Councilmember Ho for doing the right thing and voting yes, although I'm not sure if your vote is only to vote against the mayor or in fact to do the right thing. To the mayor and Councilmember Nguyen, I can only hope that you will change your minds, show some integrity for once in your time here on the city council and do the right thing. Do what your constituents are asking of you. We are here, more than the ten people who always come. Yes, we do sit in our houses and houses and homes and listen to what goes on at these meetings. So do the right thing. Thank you to the city manager. You always seem to be the voice of reason. I, we appreciate you. We know you were given an impossible task. Thank you for the police chief and all of our officers here who serve us, our city. With low wages. No respect. Please do the right thing. That's all I'm asking, especially of you, sir. Thank you.
Tim Hogan. Followed by Vas Han and Kamala Overbeek.
Don't deny me my birthright and tell me it's for principled reasons.
Baol or Vas Han?
Good morning, Mayor, and good morning, members of the council. So my name is Baol Hun. I'm a resident of Green Lantern Village Mobile Home Park. It's close here. So I heard the very embarrassing situation is the our cities Westminster going to fire bankruptcy. And the situation is very bad. I heard that. I'm, I'm not sure it will happen or not, but the action we need to do, I think I. Ask you to vote yes on cell tax city increasement. And I don't, I don't see any, I don't see any diff- different or difficult to do this because we, we still live in under. Very bad situation of pandemic and every business, they increase price, they and then the city, they increase that hat to me is, it's just normal thing. In in the easy situation, we may review tax, but in the desperate situation, we increase tax. And that's very ob- absolutely is fine. So I hope you make the right decision. In at the right time and so we can overcome this very bad situation. So that's all I want to address to verify member, verify people today. Thank you.
The next. The next speaker is Kamala Overbeek, followed by Terry Rains. And then Vincent Tran.
Good morning, Council. Kamala Overbeek, resident of Westminster. It's really sad to say that I'm surprised you all showed up. Bets were made in the community as to whether or not three of you would actually show up. Tito, I'd like to take a trip down memory lane with you. On June twelfth, twenty nineteen, you posted the following on social media. Westminster is officially now Ho Chi Minh City, brought to you by Tretah, Kimberly Ho and Chi Nguyen. You posted that in outrage because that council voted to require a majority just to place items on an agenda. You felt that the new rule would deny the people's voices to be heard. And here you are, denying the people the right to be heard. Voting in this country is a fundamental right. It's guaranteed to us in our constitution and you're denying it. Tretah, Charlie and Ty, you're blatantly ignoring the pleas and cries of the people. We're all here at eleven o'clock on a Friday. What are you doing this for? Why abstain? Why deny it? For political gain? An endorsement from the OCGOP? Do you really think that the people of Westminster are going to so quickly forget your disdain for their wishes? Furthermore, two of you are running for mayor. What city exactly are you going to be mayor of? What do you not understand? There will not be a city. You will be stripped of your rules. I find it quite ironic that there are three Republicans who thus far voted in such a way to defund the police. Thought you were the party of law and order. Back the blue. Blah, blah, blah. Guess that's bullshit. Just a mere talking point. I'm urging you all today to do the right thing. Let the voters vote. Cast your personal vote on your own ballot. Give the residents the opportunity to have our voices heard. So many residents are rushing to figure out if our houses need to go on the market to get the hell out of here before you can desecrate the city any further. And to the city staff here, living through this hellish nightmare, thank you. Christine Adolfo. I can only imagine the tireless hours that you have put forth in trying to save this city. My heart is broken by the blatant disrespect that this council is showing the members of this staff and the community. We deserve better. Let us vote. That's all we want. Let us vote. Thank you, Carlos Bonzo. Thank you, Kimberly, for doing the right thing. The rest of it lies on the three of you. Stop being cowards.
Good morning, Terry Rains, Westminster. Is today's meeting a game like in twenty twenty? The time to vote on this was Wednesday in front of the hundreds of residents and employees. My over twenty years as an activist, I can't recall a city council meeting that angered me more than that one, though a few recently have come close. After the meeting, I stuck around and commiserated with staff. Emotions were real and raw. Many were in a state of shock and fear, and there were tears shed after this council left. Tretah, Charlie, Wen and Tito, you sent a very clear message to our city staff and residents that you three don't give a shit about anyone but yourselves. You could care less about the pain and suffering that you are causing. You abstained instead of having the balls to actually cast a vote, knowing full well an abstention would be rendered a no vote. Westminster now has a new gang of three, the Chicken Shit Three. Four hours of residents and employees pouring their hearts out to you. And what did you three do? Gave them the middle finger. So you know what? Right back at you. You do not deserve to be in public office and you do not deserve to enjoy the rights and freedoms afforded to you by this great country of ours that democracy founded on the people's right to vote. What part of government of the people, by the people, for the people do you not get? Did you even look at the survey results statistically? Over seventy percent, as high as eighty percent of likely Westminster voters would vote yes on extending the existing one cent tax to preserve public safety and essential services. And lo and behold. The highest positive response was from our Vietnamese-American voters, but you refuse to let them vote. A fundamental right our beloved refugee community holds in the highest regard. If they wanted a government where they had no voice and had to live in fear, they would have stayed in Vietnam. You put your own political careers ahead of ninety-one thousand residents, our incredible police department and our city staff. You put people's lives at risk. You're running on GOP platforms touting how you support law enforcement and firefighters, which is total bullshit. Your chicken shit abstentions have just defunded both. You are three or a big fat rhinos. Did you even listen to the experts? Doing this by the way of special election will cost, be costly and futile. Charlie, Charlie, you kept asking the same questions over and over again because you did not like the answers. Facts are facts. A special standalone election will cost taxpayers at least four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And the message will have to change to a new tax versus extending the existing tax and it won't pass. Costing us millions. So why the F not do it now? Cowards. Yeah. Is this about the GOP endorsement? Guess what? GOP leaders don't want to support any of you now. Your refusal to allow residents to vote is unpatriotic. Charlie and Ty, pay attention. The mayor seat is nonpartisan. Some comments bear repeating. Mayor Ta, you have been on this council for sixteen years, ten as mayor, but have done nothing to improve our city's financial position. If it was you that got us in this mess insisting on the sunset, but what the hell have you done in those six years? Nothing. You and Charlie campaigned hard against Major C, saying we should keep our right to vote for mayor, but yet you're refusing to let us vote on saving our city. Abstaining again is chicken shit. You have a duty to vote on the issues before you and carry out the people's business. And if you refuse to vote to put a measure on the ballot, we will campaign hard against you and fully support. Dieter Tuha win for State Assembly Seventy and your legacy will be bankrupting Westminster and Little Saigon. Councilman Wen, you have been on council for four years and also have done nothing to improve the city's finances and now you're running for mayor. In twenty twenty, you supported putting the major on the ballot and you must do so today. If you do not, we will campaign hard against you and make sure the voters, especially the Vietnamese voters. Who overwhelmingly support extending the tax. I'm, I'm glad you find this funny, Charlie. No, it's you who failed them. And Councilman Doe, again, I am the most disappointed with you, as is the community. You have lost so many fervent supporters, including me. Over your position on the Quan Chi monument, but more importantly, your asinine, obstinate, unjustifiable refusal to let us vote on this. You are a police officer, for God's sake, in a city with a tax rate of ten point two five percent. So why the hell do you want to re- defund our own police department? And don't you dare say you support our police department. Actions speak louder than words. Step up and do the right thing, or we will campaign hard against you in the mayor race. And make sure the voters know it is you who failed them in our beloved police department. I don't give a shit if the three of you irresponsibly vote no at the ballot box, but you had better vote today to place the major on the ballot and let us vote, or there will be hell to pay. You can bank on that. Let us vote.
The next speaker, the next speaker is Vincent Tran, followed by Indigo Wu and Viet, Viet Youth Media.
Good evening, Council. Or sorry, good, good afternoon, Council. You know, I think today the the issue at hand should not be an issue that we're debating about. It should be a non-issue. Residents here have spoken overwhelmingly. I haven't heard a single person say that they are against putting the sales tax measure on the ballot. You all, especially Mayor Ta, Councilmember Nguyen and Councilmember Doe, you all were voted in here. you all were voted in here to amplify to the voices of residents, Westminster residents. Right now, the fact that you abstained and not even had the courage to put a position on the sales tax measure, you are basically putting a bag over people's faces and saying, you can't talk, you have no voice in our democratic system. You know, how can we call Westminster the capital of the Vietnamese overseas? You know, what is the legacy that we're leaving? When we can't even provide the basic services to our Vietnamese community members and other community members in Westminster? How can we say that, you know, I drive down Bolce Avenue and the streets aren't clean? How do we say that, you know, this is where people go to to find community when, you know, the basic services of housing, of, you know, trash pickups, of having a basic translator is not even available to them? When Santa Ana Garden Grove is doing so much more to help the Vietnamese community? How can we say that this is, you know, this is where people should be going to to find that that security, that freedom? When, you know, our council members that are voted in by the Vietnamese community members aren't standing up for the Vietnamese community members? So when you think about your legacy, you know, people aren't going to remember that you took the stance of building a certain monument or saying that you are just anti-communist. They're going to look at the newspapers and, you know, on the front covers of OC Register, on the front covers of Baung Vi. They're gonna see Mayor Ta, Councilmember Wen, Councilmember Doe, bankrupt Little Saigon, bankrupt Westminster, the capital of the overseas Vietnamese. And that's your legacy. And if people will go in the future, they'll look up Wikipedia, they'll try to figure out, you know, who's the first, you know, Vietnamese mayor? And, you know, they'll see your name, and then next to it is bankrupt the city. And, you know, is that the legacy that you want to leave behind? And I implore you to, you know, vote to at least let residents, you know, Vietnamese residents who overwhelmingly said 76% supported that sales tax measure, to at least put it on to give us the opportunity, to give us the opportunity to to vote and have our voices heard. So please do that and do it for our community and do it for your legacy. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Indigo. I'm a staff member at Viet Rise. I'm talking to you all today to urge you to please listen to every single person who has spoken before you today. Do not ignore, don't fall into the same trappings of the history that you have set up for yourselves in ignoring the pleas and cries of residents. Before I get started with the rest of my comment, I want to first paint a picture. On my way over here today, I passed by so many more campaign signs from several of you here than I did open parks, than I did see clean streets, people participating in youth programs. Our park next to two of the senior transportation buses over in the parking lot over here. And these things will be completely closed. These critical services that residents in Westminster depend on daily will be closed because of your decision to make, to to refuse to allow people here access to governments, to refuse to allow the residents here the ability to make decisions for their own lives, for their own communities. This includes not allowing them access to today's meeting by not allowing an interpreter. This, if you are truly going to call this the heart of Little Saigon, if you're going to call this representative of the Vietnamese community, then you need to look at the community that you are building, the city that you are running, and the way that it is going bankrupt. The report is not new. The report was released in early March, which means that it has been more than five months since the report was released to you all and to the public, letting you know that if you don't take action, the city will be bankrupt within two years. That is, like Vincent said earlier, that is your legacy, that is your responsibility, your burden to bear as people making these decisions for this community. If you are going to do this just for political gains, for some sort of political career, then I need you to consider what it means for you to be leader of a non-functional city, of a city that continually forgets its residents, that silences its residents, and ignores every call for help, every, every ask of you that you should actually be meeting constantly. That is your role as elected officials in this city, to make sure that the needs of your residents are met. And so many critical services are going to be closed if this tax does not make it back onto the ballot. And all people are asking is for the choice to be able to have their voice heard on this matter. You need to make sure that you are listening to your residents. That is your sole responsibility as people on the dais in this city. And so I urge you, not only just do the right thing, but do your jobs as city council members, as representatives of the city, as representatives of the residents who have complex needs here, as representatives of people living in Little Saigon, and make sure that those services are not stripped from their lives, that they have dignity in their lives still. You need to make sure you do your jobs when you are here. Thank you.
The next speaker is Viet Youth Media.
Good afternoon, everybody. I guess there's no translator here today. So I'll try to self-translate what I spoke last night. So I guess you guys have already filed pool paper and start your campaign to run for mayors and other position in higher places. Also, you guys are trying to put your cronies into the council of our city. And after hearing all the opinions from the residents of our city, I think it's my duty to remind you guys of your responsibility, your duties, and actually to help you understand your role. So here, the council members, as I've been trying to tell you, even for the mayor, you're still a council member. You have one vote. You're not running the city. The city manager is, and all the staff is actually the people that run the city. You only meet once every two weeks to help pass the decision that will maybe set direction for our city, the city manager and the staff, the police chief to run the city, not you guys. So regarding this measure, it's not your decision. It's not that you support it or against it. It's your duty to put it on the ballot this November. The citizens, the residents of the city will decide if they want to keep the current rate. Mr. Mayor, Tretah, you're actually the one that I hold responsible, accountable for our situation. You've been in the city council for 20 years. So don't blame it, don't blame it for all the bickering that's been happening the past four years. You are the captain. If you actually care and you said you set the sunset to end in six years, then you should know. You should be ready and tell Tito or Councilmember Ho to stop it, to stop all the bickering, all the disagreement, to help take care of this city, to solve the problem. Because our city is going to go bankrupt. And it might dissolve, and it's going to be on you. So don't blame it on anyone else. You've never tell our Vietnamese residents of our dire situation. You keep telling them all the beautiful things that you've done for them. But I I don't think the Vietnamese voters, the Vietnamese residents actually know what's going on with our city, that they're not going to have the police, they're not going to have the fire department, and the city is going to go bankrupt. So you are a liar. And the Vietnamese people will know about it. If they don't, I will make sure that they will know that. For Charlie, who cowardly ran away. Okay, Charlie, he has, he has been in the city council for four years. So now he's trying to run and want to be our mayor. But from what I saw last night, he's clueless. He doesn't know what's going on. He doesn't understand that if you guys don't put this on the ballot this November, the city stand to lose $12 million, $12 million. That's not going to be in the coffe of the city because of you guys. And it's so stupid to think that he can delay this and 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 pass it on to the next council. So he has no idea that if you guys don't put this measure on the ballot, then it's too late because the measure will have be ended. You has, you guys have to pass a new measure, not to extend it.
Time's up. Thank you. The next speaker, I'm sorry, that's it.
Your stupidity.
The next speaker is Kim Springer, Kim Springer. And she will be followed by Amy Walsh and Jessica Lestanow.
I'm new to this. I started out as a neighborhood watch captain. I voted for you. I don't know if this is suicide to me or what, but I'm a Republican. I'm a conservative. I understand. Please don't make us look bad. I need to know why you don't want to sign, why you don't want to say yes. I need to understand. I'm part of a GOP. Your name's all out there. Come support, come do everything. I'm struggling. I need your leadership. Tito, I don't know you. I don't. But I admired you because you're a police officer, support these people. Do the right thing. We're not, this isn't, and this is what people, it just annoys me that they're saying it's a new tax measure. It's not new. It's not new. The finance department put together all the cities surrounding us and their sales tax. Why take that away from the city of Westminster? Of course, we don't know everything that goes on in your city. We don't know. But we need our police. Charlie, your family lives in my neighborhood. You should care about that. This, by you guys just saying yes, all it's doing is allowing us, the people, to vote whether we want it or not. We don't know how it'll, it still may turn out no. I pray it doesn't. Please just do the right thing. Support our police. Don't be a rhino. It's so disheartening when I hear those comments. Stand tall, stand proud, have integrity, do the right thing. Please. Thank you.
The next speaker is Amy Walsh. Please unmute yourself, and you may begin speaking.
Hi. First thing I'd like to say is because I'm on Zoom and I actually can't see what's going on. If for some reason a council member decides to get up to, you know, excuse themselves, go to the restroom, whatever it is that they do. If we could stop my time and then wait until they come back, that would be great. Because I'm sick and tired of seeing certain council members get up and basically, in a sense, ignoring the people that are talking. And that, to me, that speaks volumes to just how the majority of this council has been behaving. You know, I'd like to thank Carlos and I'd like to thank Kimberly for trying to, you know, not take away our rights. That that's great. Thank you. Never thought I'd have to thank someone for that, but thanks. I, yesterday, I was thinking, what can I do? What can I do? What can I do to help? And I decided that I was going to call the Long Beach Police Association. And I was going to let them know how one of their union members, their officers, decided to take away the rights of the people that live in his city that he is a council member of. And the reason why I did that is because I thought maybe someone from that association would sit down and talk to him and say, dude, what are you doing? You what are you, you might not agree with this thing, but you can't take away people's rights to choose for themselves. This is not a city council decision. This is a ballot decision. I actually had someone just today ask me why I did that, why I called that associate, association. So this is, that is exactly why, because I wanted maybe someone from that group, that union, to talk to their union member, their association member. Because that's like John Denteel said, like many others have said today, that's, you're, as a police officer, you're in your, you're in the brotherhood. You basically threw all of the WPD under the bus and rolled over them a few times. I mean, at this point, you probably went out and kicked them while they were down, too. It's just, it disgusts me. Tito, I voted for you. I was 100% on your side until you started to turn into what you got on the council not to be. And I can't, oh my God, I kick myself now for even backing you up. I, it's just, it's disheartening. I, I don't live in that city anymore. We had to move because things were getting way too expensive. The reason I'm not there today is not because I'm, like Tito has said before about other residents, that I'm scared to, or like Charlie Wen says, that people are cowards for not coming in person. I have an autoimmune disease that I cannot be there in person because of COVID and monkeypox and Jesus, whatever the hell is going to show up. My, I also take care of my disabled son. So I, I do the most I can for the city, even though I don't live there anymore. Because I was on that school board for four years, and I did a lot while I was on that board. And come to think of it, I brought in the summer school program to the school district that, by the way, brings in revenue because, not summer school, I'm sorry, Saturday school, because we can regain the funds from when kids are out sick. Yeah, I actually made it. I came up with an idea on how to bring more revenue into the school district. It's, you know, research, stuff like that. That was my job as a board member. And that's your job as city council members and the mayor. Like someone said, your one vote. I, I really hope that you guys pass this today to put this renewal, because it's not new, it's not new taxes, it's a renewal on the ballot so that people can vote. If you don't, I think you all are committing political suicide. I mean, it's ridiculous.
Your time is up. Our next speaker is Jessica Lestanow. You may unmute yourself and begin speaking.
Hello, can I get some confirmation that I can be heard?
Yes.
Okay.
Please continue.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I want to thank Vice Mayor Mazo and Councilmember Ho for voting yes last week, or last week, last Wednesday. I know that you guys did that not for political reasons, not because you wanted to get at somebody, but because you really do want to do what's best for the city. So thank you very much. I want to, I want to just speak to you from the heart because I didn't prepare anything, because we're in the 11th hour here. Mayor Ta, I don't know you. I I haven't had an opportunity to know you. I've tried. I don't know you. I haven't had an opportunity to know you. I've tried, but, but it hasn't worked out for us. But I still believe that when I voted for you, you were the wisest choice. And when people asked me, why are you voting for him? I said, because you know, I really think he's not gonna ruin the city. The other, the other candidates, they seem like they could get us in big trouble, but I think Mayor Ta, he's professional enough to know he's gonna keep our city shipshape. And, and I'm not seeing that from you now. And I still think though that you do know what you need to do to keep this city shipshape. And I know that you want to move up. And I know that you want perhaps the endorsement of the Republican Party, but at what cost? You may get their endorsement, but then you'll lose the support of all of the Republicans and the no party preference people in, in your district that you're running from. I just kind of wanted you to keep that in mind, at what cost? Councilmember Nguyen, I saw the pain in your body language of having to make that abstention vote. And I know that you, I, I do know you. And we have had a really good relationship. And I know that you want to do the right thing and you, you can do it. I'm just asking you to go with your heart on this. And Councilmember Doe, I do know you. And I know you're not anti-police. I know you're a police officer. Your son is a police officer. But I know that actions speak louder than words. I think that's something that you would tell me. And if I were to someday get elected to the school board and in the process of my leadership on the school board, I made a vote that was gonna result in drastic cuts to education and the services of our students, I would be perceived as anti-education. As anti-teacher, as anti-public school, that would be the perception. So please understand that this is why the perception is that you're anti-police, not because you are, I mean, you're, you're not anti-police, but that, that is the perception. And you're looking at voters and, and perception makes a really big difference right now. And if I had a dollar for every time you told me, or I heard you tell someone else you were not a politician, I'd have a lot of money. But what you're doing right now is a hundred percent political. When you state that, oh, it's okay because the next council can vote the tax measure, or vote, allow the voters to vote for the tax measure. That tells me that you know we need the tax measure. But that tells me that you're doing this for political reasons and I'm gonna be serious here. I don't agree with you and I'm disappointed in that choice. But I'm asking you to take a moment and, and consider changing your vote on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Roger Mendrum, followed by Thu Bo. Roger Mendrum, you may unmute yourself, please.
Hello.
We can hear you. Please go ahead. Hold on a second. Mr. Mendrum, please select.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please begin.
Sorry, I keep getting the unmute button comes up. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, please go ahead.
All right, this is Roger Mendrum. I'm at work right now, so I'm just trying to squeeze in some time here, so don't really have much prepared for this. On Wednesday night, I mean, I pretty much had to leave after 11:00 PM, which was finally the end of public comments, over three hours, over three and a half hours, probably four hours of one hundred percent in favor, not only of passing this extension of the tax measure, but just place it on the ballot. You work for us. What you did on not voting for this and abstaining is pure cowardice. You acting like tyrants. We are not your subjects or your sheep. And if all of these residents from Wednesday night, not only the residents, but our city employees, if that doesn't affect you, that doesn't affect your heart to make the right decision, your hearts are black and rotten. You're turning the city into a mockery. And in less civil times in history, any of you who votes against this or abstains will be chased out of town, down the main street, stripped and wearing only tarned feathers. And Councilman Doe, please remember how you felt that night. As Camilla had presented, think about how you felt taking the right of the people away. Think of how you felt when you posted that. Westminster is officially Ho Chi Minh City. How do you think we feel? The residents feel the same way, that we're betrayed and you're taking away the right that we already have. That's the basis of the Constitution. Police officers take people's rights away every day in this country. And it takes the court systems to go after them. So just because we have a constitution and we have rights, doesn't mean that people take them away from us constantly. Happens all the time, every day. So people have to go into recourse in the courts and civil action to go after the people who've violated their rights. And you all who abstain or, or will abstain or will vote against this are violating our rights, our constitutional rights. Shame on you. You're making a mockery out of everyone here. Do the right thing. Vote yes to place this on the November election ballot. That's all I have.
Thank you. The next speaker is Thuy Bo. T H U Y B O. You may unmute yourself and begin speaking.
Good afternoon. Yes, good afternoon, Mayor Tita and other city council. I used to live in Westminster. I don't live there anymore. Live near Phuket, my first home. And I really do care for the city of Westminster. When I heard Tita, I keep saying, we have a surplus for city of Westminster. I was kind of, you know, upset, but well, you know, he liked to say what he liked to say. And with Tito, I, I really, you know, proud and appreciate that he protecting us every day with dangerous life out there. But three of you, Tita, Charlie, Tito, you all came from a country that you have to flee out for freedom. We don't get to vote there. We have democracy, constitution, let us vote. So please, allow people to, to vote. As Vietnamese-American citizens, I am begging you to vote yes, not to abstain. And this is an extension to keep the city of bankruptcy. I mean, you know, Tito have a justification that six years. We, we into COVID for two years and we still freaking in the COVID time, number one. And I think Tita, Charlie T, you know, confirmed with me when he asked the city attorney, can we bring back the agenda motion, vote, motion to bring back the agenda? The tax expansion on December first meeting, my goodness, he asked twice. Did he do, did he do his research? The city staff did their research. And knowing what's going on, you at a city council right now and running for mayor, my goodness. If I'm in that city, I will vote no a hundred and thousand times to say, to, to not vote you out. Because you have to do your homework to protect the country, the city. Do your homework to do the right thing for the city. We Vietnamese-Americans need to, we, 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 all the Americans people who came here before us to make the city so beautiful for us to come in and get our lives together after a disaster being, you know, in the communist country. So we do build our life, they helped us build our life here. And we so successful, most of us, so please vote yes, so that we're not ashamed with the people who die for us for freedom. You know, the American people, the Vietnamese people die for us, so we have what we have today, today, our life, our education. You know, everything that we have today is because of those people. Thank you. Who died for us.
Thank you. Mayor, that concludes our communications.
Thank you so much. All right, so first, I'd like to, I'd like to thank all the members of the committee for showing up to raise your concerns and and speak your mind. Really appreciate that. And I want to thank all the members of the city council. I know that it's Friday morning, everyone really busy, but all the members of the council showed up today. That's mean we really care for the community. I believe that all five of us really care for the Westminster community. I know that Councilmember Doe have to leave 1:00 PM, so why don't I do this? I don't want to waste your time. I don't want to waste all the members of the city council's time. So I'm going to make a statement and I will come up with a motion because I don't want to waste your time.
Before, before you make a motion, can I have some comments?
No, let me speak first and then, okay. Six years ago, the reason that I came up with a six-year sunset at a time, I still remember. And I think that our former councilmember Kerry remember what I said in the meeting. I oppose any tax increase. I think the community know that. However, at that time, six years ago, I believe that the measure only are temporary. So I respect the community. I ask the community to decide that the future, our financial circumstance, and you know, the reason why we end up like this, Councilmember Ho for the last meeting, she already explained, so I don't have to repeat. RDA, we was terminated. RDA, Westminster RDA was terminated in 2011. I still oppose any tax increase. However, I respect the community. I honor anyone's right to vote, to decide the future of our city. I totally respect that. I listen to all your concerns and I take into consideration. I still believe, I still believe a sunset. Is it a time for the resident to evaluate the financial circumstance of the city? So the voter, if they have the sunset, they still have opportunity to vote again. And the sunset is, is a reminder for our, for our city leadership. We better come up with a solution to continue all of the quality services that we've been providing to our community. I love our police. The people know that. For the last sixteen years on the city council, I've been strongly support our police department. They ask for anything, they have my support. That's not a secret. I've been supporting our law enforcement for the last sixteen years on the council. So I don't want to waste your time. So I want to make, so I'm going to make a motion. Maybe some of you would not help me about it, but that is my responsibility. Because I still consider myself at the captain of a ship. And I want the city continue to move forward. At the same time, I, I have to respect my conservative principle because you know, in my principle, I oppose any tax increase. So my motion is extend measure SS, measure with twenty years sunset. And I won't do anything without that. So twenty years sunset measure SS, that is my motion.
I, I, I want to make some comments. I know that Councilmember Doe, I need to leave at one, but I, I want to take this opportunity to say once and for all. And I, I, I'm telling you, I'm saying this from the bottom of my heart. And I hope that you understand that. First of all, I want to thank you all for coming out and speak your mind and express your opinions about the item that we have today. And I want to tell you that we heard you loudly and clearly from the other day and from the other night and today. I just want to let you know that you are coming out here to talk and, you know, to voice your opinion. But as a council member, I am listening to everyone. Listening to you, listening to those people who call me, listening to the people who write to me, listening to the people who saw me out there and talked to me. So my decision is very crucial when I make addition on this digest. I make with integrity, I make with, you know, with assessment. I'm not blankly follow anybody. I don't care who. But I have to take it into consideration for the benefit of the resident of the city. I want you to know that. And you know that we have this meeting today is because I make a motion to have the meeting today and second it by Vice Mayor Mazza. I just want to let you know that. And there is nothing, there is nothing that we cannot resolve. It's just a matter that we need to get together, get ourselves together, think together, discuss about the issues, you know, is, you know, if you sit in my, my seat, you will have difficulty too. Okay, you might say that, why? But I can tell you that. So what I'm saying is that I don't mind that you come out here and express your opinion, screaming at me, yelling at me, degrade my integrity. But please, you know, I take it too funny is because this never runs in my family. My family never put me down if I do wrong things. They come and talk to me and they reasonably, reasonably talk to me. I don't think that it's good idea that we come up and use the profanity, profanity words or using sign that degrading council members. We are here as a servant. We try to do the best for everyone. So I appreciate for those who come out and express your opinion. I value your opinions. And I will, you know, do according to, you know, what, what best for the, the citizens of this Westminster. I heard you. I don't know where you, but you said that you in my neighborhood. But you know, I, I really appreciate for your words, your kind words, and we'll, we'll, we'll consider that. Like I said the other day, there is no doubt that our city currently face serious financial challenges. And my slogan is crime against crime and against tax. Okay, even though I still think that we are in the city, we need to do what need to be done. Okay. Even though I still think that we are in the city, we need to do what need to be done. And I need to, and I'm supporting the safety, public safety and our police. I can tell you that. I told you the other day and I'm, I'm continuing to tell you that. And that's my slogan. My slogan is crime fighter, tax fighter and public servant. And I will stick with that. And so today, I want, I, I want to conclude says, you know, there's nothing that we can not solve. There's nothing that we can resolve. Let's do it today. Okay. Thank you.
I second that. Well, before we have a, before that, I want to have a couple of seconds. I know that I've said it quite a bit. I understand. I think this is pretty important. I, I respect the mayor's, you know, ideology, his, 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 how much he holds your, for conservative views. I totally respect that. I try to respect as everybody's views. I think that no matter what religion, whatever political views you have, but before us today, in the situation here in Westminster, what we have, it's not about liberal views or conservative views, how you feel. It's an issue of math. Math do not, does not lie. Math is a universal language. And I think this mayor and, and I'm assuming Charlie Wayne dude, they don't understand the situation that we're mathematically under. Conservative views is, is not what's, what's hurting our city. Liberal views is not what's hurting our city. It's math. You, we've all explained, you've heard our situation, our tax situation that's been, we've been under since, from Prop 13. And, and here as a council, we have the ability to fix and to fix a problem that our city's been suffering for, for, for many, many years. And I find it very, very sad that we do not see that problem that our city faces. The, the problem our city faces is unique. Many other cities don't have. Like I said before, well, I don't know if the other councilman, maybe council member Doe, he, he works in Long Beach, but I get to drive around so many cities and see how they've been progressing. They, they do so much because they have the, they have the funds to do it. Just drive over to stand and see how much they've been doing. Just drive over to, I mean, I drive everywhere. I understand what you're saying. I understand that, but mathematically, we have an issue, we have a problem and we have the ability to fix it. It's not about conservative views. It's not about liberal views. So please understand that. I get what you're saying. And I try, I understand you're running for political office, but we have a problem that has just been crippling our city for so many years. For so many years.
Mr. Mayor, I know that we had a discussion the other night and continue today. So I guess that we have a motion on the floor. I call for the, I call for the vote.
Well, we have a need to allow other council member to speak because I'm allow council member, oh, she wants to make a substitute motion.
Let me, let me make just a brief comment too. Just be careful in your comments because we had that, you know, a quote about a campaign slogan. We cannot campaign from the dais. So just be careful. We cannot use that kind of language.
I apologize for that. I didn't mean that.
Well, I, I think it might be good if I just make a few comments if you don't mind. Because I mean, my comments are really trying to really convince my constituents to vote a certain way. So, you know. I was just saying, I just want to say that, you know, what I, 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 I do have, I wrote three pages while listening to you guys talk. And so I'll just narrow it down. I'll cut it down to just one, just short paragraph. And I think what it is, is that I think of our formula for a successful city. And I'm going to continue to push for that is number one is we cut costs, we stay lean, we bring in new revenue. We extend this tax and no new taxes. We're not, we're not talking about any new taxes today. But I really think that 20 years of this tax is, is only going to kick the can down the road. And, you know, having another sunset clause when we know there's, you know, COVID still around. And we just don't know when it's going to flare up. We're still in that state of emergency. And I hate to have to put this whole town through this again. So I, you know, I really think that we need to put the power in the hands of the people once again, of the voters to end this tax whenever they choose to. So I make a motion for no, no extension, no, what I meant is extension, but no sunset, no sunset clause. I apologize. I would say that again. I'm going to make a substitute motion for accepting the yes. I know. Let, let us just see.
Please, please.
I know we all want to go home, but we want also.
Order, order, please. Please, we're trying to.
Okay. Yeah. So that was my.
Like I said, Mayor, can, can I ask you please to understand it? Like I said, I, I totally respect your, your conservative views, but this is a math problem that we have before in our city is not a, is not a republic conservative view. And I totally respect that, but we have the ability today.
Can I speak?
Yes.
I respect, I totally respect Councilmember Ho and Vice Mayor Manzo, but I believe 20 years is more than enough time for the resident of a city. They have another voice after 20 years. I think 20 years is a lot, is a long time. Either you take it or you leave it. I go with 20 years.
I want to.
At my stand.
I want to add to that. If you look at the chart the other day that the staff presented to us, most of the city, they do have the, the sunset on that too. Yes, they do. They do 20 years, 30 years and this and that. And so, you know, I, I guess that 20 years, we, in that 20 years timeframe, we can always renew it. Okay. Whenever we think that it need to be done.
Okay. So if you want to make another substitute motion, please do, but you know, the clock is ticking.
Go ahead.
Okay. So we have the motion in second floor. Are you, are you good?
I think she should make a substitute motion.
Okay. So go ahead.
Is, is there, is there a second to substitute motion?
Is there any substitute motion?
Currently, there is no second on the substitute motion.
Okay. So I call for Western, motion in second floor.
Before, before we vote, just so, so I want to be clear. On your motion, that there is, this includes adoption of the resolution that is at 1% continuing the existing tax for 20 years. That's till March 31st of 2043.
Yes. At least, you know, I thought I said 20 year extend 1%. You know, extend like the same SS measure with 20 year sunset.
Okay. And so the vote would include the adoption of the resolution to place it with attaching the ordinance as Exhibit A.
Correct.
Would also include the first reading of the ordinance. And I would propose, because we have in the agenda, certain versions of this, we don't have a sunset version. So what I would say is.
Sorry, Mark Mandel.
What? Yes, I was going to change some language to it. Okay.
So just for the record, so that people that can't see us, Mark Mandel is currently on Zoom. That's the voice that you just heard.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Ben Nelson. Maybe it would work for me to just read the two additions to the, the ones to the resolution. Okay.
Go ahead. Enter the ordinance as well.
Correct. Okay. The, the change would be to add to section one of the ordinance, add a section 3 dot 11 dot 150 termination. The transactions and use tax imposed pursuant to this chapter shall be levied until March 31st, 2043, at which time it will terminate. And then the change for the resolution is to change the ballot question that appears in section three of the resolution to read as follows. Westminster no tax increase local services measure. To protect Westminster's local finances without increasing tax rates, prevent cuts to 911 emergency response, police, gang, drug prevention, firefighters, paramedics, emergency response equipment, disaster preparedness, addressing homelessness, protecting drinking water, maintaining local jobs and for general government use, shell and ordinance continuing the existing voter approved 1% sales tax until March 31st, 2043, providing estimated 16 million, 800,000 dollars annually, requiring audits, public spending disclosure, funds controlled locally be adopted. And those are the two changes that would need to be made to implement the mayor's motions.
So does the maker of the motion include that?
Yes, and do everything. I mean, you are city today, so you.
Just want to make sure we're clear. Okay.
All right. We're good. Okay. So we have motion second floor. Please vote.
Thank you, Mayor. And that motion was originally made by Mayor Ta. And you've agreed to these amendments and seconded by council member Nguyen. And you also agree to those amendments.
Only 1%, right? 1%?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And that would include, let me read both of these titles, please. That would include for a 1% tax measure to be included as a ballot measure to the general municipal election called by the city of Westminster to be held on November 8, 2022, via adoption of resolution entitled a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Westminster, submitting a transaction and use tax measure to the voters at the November 8, 2022 general municipal election and taking certain related actions. And that includes the amendments stated into the record by Mark Mandel. And it also is to introduce an ordinance for first reading entitled an ordinance of the city of Westminster, California, adding chapter 3.11, transaction and use tax of 2022 to Title III Revenue and Finance of Westminster Municipal Code. And that is to read by title only and wait for the reading at this time. And that also includes the various amendments stated for the record by Mark Mandel.
All right, please.
Councilmember Doe.
Abstain.
Councilmember Ho.
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Before I cast my vote, once again, I, I want to say that, you know, many of them, many of you last lived over, you know, a couple of days, a couple of nights, including myself. And I did, I want to appreciate that, you know, I, I have a chance to talk to a lot of people and came up with, you know, the decision to, decision to today. So my vote is yes.
And Mayor, Vice Mayor Manzo.
Yes.
And Mayor Ta.
Yes.
Motion. Just a moment. Motion carries, Mayor, four yeses.
Mayor, the final vote was the motion carries with four yeses and one abstention by council member Doe.
All right. Any, any comments, city council agency member? I see none because 1 o'clock, because we don't have to leave. So the next regular meeting will be September 14th, 2022, 7:00 PM. We need to join.